Aloha, mai kaku. My name is Chantel Turualindo. I am the Chair of the Molokai Planning Commission. And welcome you all to our meeting of December 11th, 2024. It is now 1 o'clock PM Hawaii Standard Time. Our meetings can be accessed online. The link and information is on the agenda posted to our website on the county, MauiCounty.gov. Our physical location, if anybody would like to attend in person, is, oh, sorry, there's no in-person today, just all, all today is all virtual. You can either log on to view our meeting online or you can also use the phone if you would like to testify. We would like to do a roll call at this time. Please state where you are and if there's any adults in the room with you. Commission Vice Chair Shannon Kahanui.
Hello, everyone. I'm at home by myself.
Commissioner Luella Albino is on her way. Commissioner Kanani Kalabi Shaw Jorio.
Aloha, I am here present in my office alone.
Thank you. Commissioner Kyo Malani Hanapi Hirata. Turn off my... Sorry.
Aloha, aloha, mai kaku. Kyo Malani Hanapi Hirata. Participating on my, my own time from the Molokai District Office. And in the room with me is Chair Chantel Turualindo. Mahalo.
Okay, mahalo. Commissioner John Russell Pfeiffer. We'll wait till you get.
I'm here.
Alright, there you go.
I'm here by myself at home.
Thank you. Commissioner Deborah Kelly. Okay, I'll hang on and wait for you. Commissioner Kiola Mopono Segario.
Aloha, I'm here in my room by myself.
Alright, mahalo, and Commissioner Kelly? Is, uh, do we have her muted staff? Is, is that on our side? Commissioner Kelly, would you like to log off and then log back on and try again? Okay, we'll give her a minute to log off and log back on. And meanwhile, I think we still have enough commissioners and so we will, I will continue on. You are able to testify at this meeting in writing or on our online process or by phone. All of the information again is on the agenda and the agenda is posted on our website at MauiCounty.gov. Testimony will be available at the beginning of the meeting for anyone wishing to testify on any agenda item. You'll have a total of three minutes to testify at the beginning of the meeting. If you would prefer, we also give testimony time at the end of each agenda item presentation before discussion by the commissioners. You have three minutes to conclude each agenda item if you wish to wait until that time. So wait for Commissioner Kelly. We'd like to ask you to please silence all of your noise-making devices. Keep the conversation to a minimal. Please don't unmute or put on your camera until you're asked to be called on. And our commissioners should have their cameras on at all times to ensure that we have a forum. Candace.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to state that we do have a physical location. It's here at the Maui office that Sybil is sitting in on your screen that you can see. It's been posted on the agenda that if anybody wanted to, we did have a courtesy testimony site here on Maui. Not that I think people flew over from Molokai to Maui to testify when they could do so virtually, but I'm just calling that out for the record that we do have a courtesy site set up here. And that was because Sybil is currently on Maui this week. Thank you.
Okay, so if anybody on Maui is wishing to attend this meeting and testify and would like to do so in person, it's at the current Planning Division Conference Room at One Main Plaza and 2200 Main Street, Suite 619 in Waileu, Maui. Commissioner Kelly, still not back on. Okay. Alright, um... Did she log back on, staff? Oh, there. Okay, Commissioner Kelly, are you able to unmute now? Staff, and we're sure that the, it's not on our, oh, there. Did you say something? Commissioner Kelly. Um, no, I'm here by myself. Sorry. Oh, awesome. Yep. Yes, we can. Thank you so much. Alright, moving along. Anyone wishing to testify at the beginning of the meeting on any agenda item can do so at this time. We are now open for public testimony on any agenda item. You will have three minutes to conclude on any agenda topic that you would like to testify on. If you are wanting to testify, please raise your hand or put it in the chat and our staff will be happy to assist you in the lineup. Staff, do we have any testifiers?
Hi Chair, this is Chantel. I see no one online wishing to testify.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, Commissioner.
This is Lopez in the Maui office, Room 619, for the public testifiers. And there is no one here wishing to testify.
Thank you, Sybil. Okay, Commissioners, without objection, I will now close public testimony. Moving on to B Communications. We will now hear a presentation from the Department of Environmental Management on the status of the Molokai landfill, including hazardous waste disposal procedures. The presentation will be for the informational purpose only. So there are no decisions being made here and we really appreciate the Department of Environmental Management making time to educate and answer some of the questions of the Molokai Planning Commission. Welcome, Mr. Schmidt. Just making sure you haven't said anything yet because we can't hear anything.
Can you hear me now? I'm trying to figure out how to share the screen.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Presentation. Try once more. Can you see the screen?
Yes, we can. Mr. Schmidt, we can see the screen, we just cannot hear you.
I apologize. For some reason, sharing screen cuts off my sound. I will, uh...
Okay. Staff, is there a way for you to work with Mr. Schmidt, Chantel, in getting his presentation so that you can control it from our end? And then I will ask that the Commission revise our agenda to move forward with the contested case hearing first? Is that okay? Anybody hear me?
Yes, Chair. Deputy Director Schmidt, could you transmit your presentation to Chantel and planning staff?
Thank you. Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to amend the agenda to bring Item C up first and then move Item B to C. Motion by anybody? Okay, motion by Commissioner Bishad Jorio, second. By Vice Chair Kahanui. I need discussion. All those in favor? Please raise your hands so I can see you. Let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. We're missing... Oh, there you go. Alright, unanimous. Thank you so much. Moving on to the amended item B, contested case hearings. So pursuant to Chapter 91-10 of the HRS, the subchapter 4 of the Molokai Planning Commission Rules of Practice and Procedure, any individual wishing to testify on these items is required to do so under oath and may be asked by the applicant and members of the Commission and questioned. The applicant may provide comments in response to each testifier and should notify the Commission if it wishes to do so. Item number one, Molokai Special Management Area Exemption for the Molokai Community Health Center is requesting a special management area exemption for the renovation of an approximately 2,000-square-foot existing dental building, including reconfiguration of the interior walls, electrical and plumbing upgrades, equipment upgrades, repairs to approximately 2,400 square feet of existing medical building, replacing termite-damaged wood and repairs to the parking lot lights located at 30 Oki Place in Konakakai. The valuation of this project is $1,679,000 and I'll turn it over to Sybil Lopez, the staff planner.
Mahalo, Chair, aloha, Commissioners. I'm Sybil Lopez, the staff planner. You guys can hear me okay, right? I'm the staff planner working on the project that is before you today. The applicant is the Molokai Ohana Health Center, which is situated within the central district of the island of Molokai in the Konakakai Ahupuaa. The valuation is $1,679,000. The Department recommends to waive this, that this proposed action is not a development and the scope of work is located in the proposed development. So I do have Ms. Terry Ratty who represents the Molokai Ohana Healthcare. And I believe you do have the PowerPoint presentation that was sent to you. Chair, if you don't mind, I would want to introduce Ms. Terry Ratty and turn the table over to her so she can go through her PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. Ms. Ratty, will you turn your camera on so I can see you? Alright, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Alright, you may proceed. Mahalo for joining us.
Thank you. I hope I'm able to share my screen and don't have mute issues too, so let's give it a shot. Yeah, I too am having some technical issues, but let me try again. There we go. Hey, are we doing okay? You can see it and you can hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, well, I'm Terry Ratty. I'm Project Manager for Molokai Community Health Center. And on behalf of the Community Health Center staff, I would like to just thank you, Planning Commission members, and also Sybil and Candace. You've been invaluable for assisting us with respect to this project. So the scope of the project consists of three main components. The first component consists of renovating the interior of the dental building to provide expanded dental service to Molokai residents. It's important to note that there will be no ground disturbance or changes to the existing building footprint as a result of the renovation. The second component includes removing and replacing the floor and subfloor in the medical building. And finally, we would like to do some electrical upgrades and replace the solar batteries in the parking lot and pathway lights around campus. So Molokai Community Health Center leadership has been monitoring the changing dental climate on the island of Molokai for the past several years. However, there's been some pretty drastic changes in the climate in the last year, so through 2024. Until recently, there have been four dental practices on island, the three private dental practices, and then our dental practice that serves the Molokai community.
Sorry, Ms. Ratty, were you interested?
In November.
For the slides to change as you were talking, or?
I was, yeah. It did, did it not change?
No.
Okay. So my screen shows another, a different slide. Oh, I'm not sure how I do this. Okay, let me try this. Is that better? Did that change now?
No.
Huh.
Uh, that's okay. If we can just make sure that Commissioners and our community has access to the electronic file of the presentation, I think we can move forward.
Okay, and it's brief, so again, the changing dental climate on the island since January... Uh, oh, let me go back. Okay, so Dr. Davis closes practice in November. And effective January 2024, the remaining dental practices no longer, the private practices no longer accept insurance. So that leaves Molokai Community Health Center as the only practice on island that accepts all patients regardless of insurance status or ability to pay. And that has had a profound effect on our business. Since January 1st, we've accepted almost 500 new patients. Our patient encounters have increased 150%. Our dental providers sees there at least 25 patients and up to 30 patients a day. And we have provider appointments scheduling out eight weeks with hygiene appointments scheduling out up to six months. So anticipating these changes, in 2022, we were invited to apply for congressionally-directed spending funding through Congressman Kaheli's office to help facilitate this project. We received the funding. We've also received Hawaii Dental Service Foundation grant funding and Maui County funding that will help offset some of the high operational costs that are associated with the project. Because our campus is in the 100-year floodplain, we did have conditions, environmental conditions, that were placed on the funding by the funding source in our Notice of Award. And those conditions included notifying Molokai residents of our intention to do renovation on property in the floodplain. We did provide two public notices, one in November of 2023, one in December 2023. At that time, no public comments or responses were received and the environmental conditions from the Notice of Award have been lifted. So we've been working with Maui County and have received all the construction permits for the project, but of course they're pending the SMA approval. And the SMA is the final piece that we need to resolve before we can begin construction on the project. So of course, contingent upon the SMA approval, we anticipate demolition to start Q1, quarter 1 of 2025. In a very recent development, we have had an opportunity to rent Dr. Davis's space while we are under renovation in our dental practice. We do anticipate doing so with the intent that it will alleviate stress on patients. It will alleviate stress on the provider and employees in the dental practice and we're hoping that it will also accelerate the construction timeline. We do anticipate full completion by December 2025. And now you can't see this, but I'm, we're showing a bird's-eye view of the completed project. Now, I don't know if you've had a chance to visit our practice, but before this, the north half of the dental building was dedicated towards office space, so it was rented by another organization. And the south half of our building is where our dental practice operates. Our intention is to expand the dental practice into the full 2,000 square feet of the building and we'll add two additional dental provider operatories and one additional hygiene operator. Doing this will allow for two full-time dentists and two full-time hygienists in our practice. As I stated earlier, the renovation consists mainly of moving some interior walls. There will be some plumbing and some electrical work that will be required. However, all plumbing and conduit will be run above ground and we don't want to disturb the ground as a result of this project. I'll also indicate that the majority of costs for this project are tied up in equipment. We'll have to buy all new dental operatories. Will be new instruments, new chairs, new lab with new lab equipment, new x-ray machines, new furnishings, new IT equipment for the staff. Component of this project includes some maintenance required in the medical building. During a recent building inspection, termite damage was found in the medical department's subfloor. Termite mitigation is deemed necessary. So as part of the project, we'll be replacing the parts of the subfloor that have termite damage as well as all of the internal flooring in the department, the building. That's about 2,400 square feet. We've also had a structural engineer inspect the post and peer foundation and that was found to be in good condition, so we won't disturb any ground with this project. And then, as a final project, we have some electrical issues that have been identified as high need throughout campus. You may recall that Molokai Community Health Center first occupied the space starting in 2010 and we began renovating the buildings on campus to retrofit to what you see today. Back in 2014, we finished the renovations and Maui County issued certificates of occupancy back in 2014. However, it was recently noted that two buildings were not, did not receive the COs back in 2014. So we've had Maui County conduct the necessary inspections to issue the certificates. There are some electrical issues that were identified by our, by the electrical inspector and we want to complete those projects as part of this SMA. And then finally, we would also like to replace the solar batteries in the pathway and parking lot lightings throughout campus. And so I'd like to kind of summarize by noting that Molokai Community Health Center leadership and staff are keenly aware of the fact that we're on the ocean and therefore we're in the floodplain. We appreciate the Planning Commission's reluctance to want to approve projects for work that is going to be done on properties in the floodplain. Understanding this, we have worked with the consultants and we've asked for a design of the project so that no underground work or ground disturbance will be required. I'd also like to note that leadership is in process of identifying sites for future relocation. Unfortunately, this dental issue is happening now and we anticipate that relocation of our business will take years. Because the project is heavy in equipment and it affects the health and well-being of Molokai residents and because work will be accomplished within the existing building parameters, also due to the fact that we're on a pretty strict timeline with respect to project funding, we respectfully request your consideration of this project. And with that, I'll thank you for your consideration and open it up to questions or comments.
Mahalo, Ms. Ratty. Um, Sybil, do you have anything further you would like to say before I turn it over to public testimony?
Nope, we're good. Just that the Department requests from the Commission to recommend to waive the meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Alright, Commissioner, do you have any questions for the presenter before I open up? Okay, see none. I'm gonna open up this item to the community for testimony. Anyone wishing to testify on the contested case Special Management Area Exemption for the Molokai Community Health Center, please raise your hand or signify by typing your name in the chat and your desire to testify and our staff will call you accordingly.
Hi Chair, this is Chantel. I see no one online wishing to testify.
Well, Chair, this is Sybil Lopez in the Maui testifying room and there's no one here wishing to testify. Thank you.
Mahalo, thank you so much, Chair, Commission. If no one has objections, I will close testimony at this time. Okay, see none. Public testimony is closed for this item. Alright, Commissioners, we have before us the Special Management Area Exemption for the Molokai Community Health Center. You've heard the presentation, the recommendation from the Planning Department is to approve the exemption. Would anybody like to make a motion or have, and then we can have discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to pass.
Okay, motion to approve by Commissioner Pfeiffer. Any second?
My second.
Second by Commissioner Kahanui. Okay. Commissioners, open for discussion. Any questions from any of the Commissioners or discussion? Okay, I have one. Ms. Ratty, mahalo for... Ms. Ratty, mahalo for acknowledging our concern. Is she still on? Okay, mahalo for acknowledging our concern about projects on the shoreline. We appreciate that. I also appreciate all of the information and your efforts to revise the original plan in order to steward that kulianna of climate change and sea level rise with your organization. My question is, knowing all of that stuff, does the Community Health Center have a demolition plan for the facility during a time when you need to move or whether it's forcibly true, the changing climate or sea level, or when you're ready to vacate the property? Do you have a demolition plan?
Oh, we're right now just trying to identify locations that might be suitable for us to do our business. And as you're probably aware, it's difficult to find any sites that might be available on Molokai for the size that we need, the location, and that have or have the capability of having services. So at this point, we're in the process of trying to identify a location. We're also, we've also been meeting monthly to start devising a plan, but we have not developed anything yet for what happens when we relocate. We anticipate that this will be, you know, a several-year project. So at that time, I'm sure we will be coming back to the Molokai Planning Commission for guidance on how to do this.
Thank you so much. Planning Department, when a project like this comes before us and we exempt them from these, the SMA permitting, do they sign a waiver that releases the county and us of any liability caused by sea level rise or climate change? I know we've done this before, but is that the case in this, with this project?
Ah, what, Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, so it's, we usually have what we call in, necessarily what we call it, but it is an internal policy. And if you look in your exhibit one, the November twelve letter that is addressed as amended changes school from the Molokai Community Health Center. The second page does acknowledge that, you know, that MCHC is aware that the proposed action occurs within the sea level rise, and that it'll be their responsibility for proactive efforts to implement the department-approved mitigation measures to ensure the safe and appropriate management of the project site.
Thank you, Sybil.
You're welcome.
Wanted to get that on the record. Also, can somebody please clarify the valuation? Then, the cost of the project for the construction efforts that she explained, that sounds like a really high valuation. Can somebody please explain why it's one million six hundred? Go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, it's the equipment costs that are so expensive. So we're looking at all new operatories, X-ray machines, all new furnishings in the dental building, IT, those kind, yeah, those things. The construction, the floor, the medical building has been identified as a four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar project. That was when we thought that we were going to have to do work on the foundation. And since that time, we have asked, or we've had a structural engineer review the building and determine that no foundation work will be required. So essentially, and then seventy-five thousand dollars for the electrical costs through campus, the electrical upgrades, and then the solar lights on, in the batteries for the solar lights and pathway lights. So the remaining funding is essentially two-thirds equipment, one-third construction. Very equipment-heavy, and the equipment will be movable. I'll also note that. So when, when there is the time where we relocate, we will take the, all the equipment with us to the new facility.
Just for our clear understanding, either staff or Ms. Ratty, is it typical that a project includes furnishings and equipment in the valuation of the project? And if not, what, what makes, what warrants the valuation to cover these things? Because you also said you'd be able to take it, but I'm assuming that some of this equipment is going to be fixed to the ground?
No, not the equipment.
Not the equipment.
The only thing that will be affixed is, you know, obviously to the building, any plumbing and electrical.
Okay.
Um, Commissioners, I can maybe chime in, because, so for valuations, we go by Public Works, and they usually use the building permit valuation. Sometimes for things like furniture in your home, like a piano or something fancy, that doesn't count. But if it is fixed to the wall, as you were saying, which a lot of dental equipment can be not permanently fixed, but just attached, like a screen that you're looking at while you're getting your teeth done, some of the equipment, the X-ray machines are maybe attached to electrical, then building department does include that in the valuation. This was similar, we saw a lot of this after the Lahaina rebuild, when people were getting insurance money. FEMA kind of did it in a similar way, where they said, if I were to take your house and turn it upside down, and everything that fought would fall out, would not count. But things that would not fall out, like your shutters, if your shutters were connected to your home, your kitchen equipment, like the hood range in your kitchen, that doesn't come out, then that's, that's part of your building permit. So for dental equipment, a lot of that gets, you know, kind of attached to the electric things in the walls and into the floors, so they include that. Thank you.
So, so not to nitpick or anything, but again, we want to be able to build our capacity and understanding. So with that analogy you just used Candace, Ms. Ratty said that things wouldn't be fixed to the ground. And if you shook the dental building upside down, they would probably fall out. So my question would be like, why? Or, I'm assuming that whatever is included in the permit or included in the permit as a valuation is now covered by insurance or under some kind of liability coverage. How does that affect the valuation if what you're saying is true and things not fixed to the building falls out or whatever? In Ms. Ratty's case, where she says the furniture is movable and portable?
If, if everything is movable and portable, if none of that dental equipment, the chairs are not going to be fixed into the ground, the monitors are not going to be inserted into the wall, I don't know how the monitors are not going to be hooked up to electric lines. I mean, she, I think Ms. Ratty and I are just having a little bit of a miscommunication on what affixed means. She was, they're not permanent, but I'm pretty sure she still means that that equipment is somehow attached into the electrical lines. I see her nodding at me.
That's correct. Yeah. So like the X-ray arms obviously will be affixed to the walls. The cabinets where that provide the dental operatory, so where they have, where they've put supplies, store supplies and those kinds of things, will be affixed to the walls. The monitors will be affixed to the walls. But I, I was, the understanding that we were talking about affixing to the ground, which was, is something different than what we're actually doing, so.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
Sorry, my question was, I know that the flooring in the medical building is going to be removed, the subfloor and the floor. Will all that things be removed on a daily basis to the landfill? Or will it be stored on-site somewhere? And if it is, how will that be protected? Because you are in the SMA area. And you also mentioned, like, the dental service relocated during renovations. What happens to the medical side? Will they be still operational while you're doing the flooring? And I think that's the only things that I wanted to ask. Sorry. You folks also included the letter for DILNR, but that was for the Cultural Healing Center? So what? Sorry, three things.
Okay, I can address. We can, so the medical building, we will, we'll keep medical open during construction. We plan to identify or to move room to room. So we don't have to, we won't affect the medical department staff as, we'll do that as, as little disruption as possible. And as such, we can also, if that's what is, probably does make sense. I haven't gotten as far as the demolition side of things, but we can remove the materials day-to-day. That is no problem. So if that's deemed necessary or appropriate, then yes, we will do that. The third question, I'm, I don't know that I included that in the packet.
Are you referring to the Sawyer's report, Commissioner Kelly? The NICS report?
It was the letters.
I don't have it in here.
All right, let me look for it. It was the, the Molokai Community Health Center addressing the Culture Healing Center.
Are you referring to the agency transmittals?
Exhibit two, it's in exhibit two, while it was included in my packet anyway. There was one from the Community Health Center to DILNR.
Yeah, that was in reference, you're correct, that it was agency transmittals. And we felt that the DILNR for DOFA, because it addressed where the, where the area is located, not really specifically to the scope of work, but because it addresses the Hawaiian duck, the Hawaiian steel, the Hawaiian coo, that, you know, it's just informative. Because you're talking about the same location, but not much of the scope of work. So i-if you feel that's unnecessary, then it's okay. Thank you, Commissioner, for finding that out. Yeah.
Okay.
And I also wanted to, so that the commission knows that the applicant itself is aware. They are aware that they do have the Hawaiian duck, the Hawaiian steel, and the Hawaiian coo in that area, or can occur within that vicinity of that location.
Okay. Yeah, except for if there was an addition that was done on a Monday, because our landfill is closed on Monday. Just be aware when there's any removed material. It should not be stored on-site. Unless you're specific about a way to protect it. Just in case, you know, if it rains, whatever. Okay, that'll be my recommendation or opinion.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Kelly. Okay, any other Commissioners with questions or discussion? Commissioner Kahaniui.
Hello, Ms. Ratty, just, just going back to, you said you guys are gonna be moving into like the Davis's office, correct? You're taking over the Davis? So are, 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 is there equipment gonna be left for you guys? Or is that something that they, they, they're gonna get rid of, or is that something that you guys can, can buy, or?
We will be using Dr. Davis's equipment while we're occupying his space, yes.
So you's not, not purchasing, nothing, just renting?
No, he has donated the equipment to us. So we will take what, you know, I, I haven't personally been through the practice to know what is in there. The dental professionals have done that, and some of the equipment, we will take.
Sorry, can I just rein this in a little bit, so that's not on our agenda? But, but thank you for the information. Mr. Kahaniui, you get anything, any other questions related to the agenda topic?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay.
I said it because she brought it up, so.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we have a vote on the floor. Moved by Commissioner Pfeifer, and then seconded by Vice Chair Kahaniui to approve the SMA exemption. I'm gonna do a roll for vote. Commissioner Pfeifer.
Aye.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Kahaniui.
Aye.
Commissioner Jario.
Aye.
Commissioner Hana P. Hirata.
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Keola Maupono Sagario.
Aye.
Commissioner Debbie Kelly.
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion, motion is carried unanimously. Congratulations.
Mahalo, Chair.
Should approve. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back to communications, presentation from the Department of Environmental Management. Are we ready?
And just to know, if that doesn't work, I can be the backup. I do have it, so we can try one more time.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Schmidt. You swear to tell the truth? Wait, did he hear, did he hear me? Is he on?
This is Candace Thackerson. Are we all seeing the screen that I'm sharing?
We are all seeing the screen, but we cannot hear Mr. Schmidt.
We can see you, Bob, but we can't hear you. Do you want to say something? Oh, yeah, we can't hear you. We can hear you now. I, I heard you sigh. Did we lose you again?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. You're a little bit muted, maybe you could speak up? You're a little bit muted. Maybe you could speak up?
Better?
Is that better, Commissioners?
Yes.
If you just tell me next slide, I'll click to the next slide.
Next slide.
Thank you, PD Director, okay.
Okay, Molokai landfill uh started in nineteen ninety-three. Um, approximately forty acres in is is the site acreage. Forty-five hundred tons of waste per year. And approximately twenty percent of that is recycled. It's green waste and metals and other recyclables. And the current permitted landfill space that we can produce here should uh. Currently estimated uh is good till two thousand and forty-nine. Next slide.
I'm trying, my computer is um. There we go.
For solid waste uh permit, which allows us to operate the landfill is. Based on Hawaii administrative rules. And therein they define hazardous waste, which we are unable to accept. But they also define special wastes which we are able to uh accept and I would like to more detail. Further into the presentation, next slide. And the state uh uses the EPA's definitions of both hazardous waste and special waste. They were put into place by the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act. Uh, in nineteen seventy-eight, and that was when the EPA turned special waste. Which had been formerly uh hazardous waste, and so they decided that they were less hazardous to human health in the environment. And so they're gonna allow special waste then to be allowed to go into subtitle C. Landfills, which Molokai is one. Next slide. So by permit, we're able to accept special waste, but only after we establish. Specific written practices on how to safely accept and landfill those wastes. Next slide. So what's not able to be accepted is the regulated, the hazardous waste. We cannot accept uh radioactive waste, ECB contaminated waste. Untreated infectious waste. Uh, bulk liquid waste, we 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 don't, we wanna keep liquids out of the landfill. Uh, loads with significant amounts of green waste, scrap autos, white goods, tires, lead acid batteries and press gas tanks. None of those can be accepted. Next slide. And then in addition, by policy, we prohibited accepting agricultural waste. Uh, tree trunks, uh roots, cables, wire fences. Those items are are more about size limitation and hazards to landfill equipment. Uh, drums unless one end is completely open. We prohibit sewer sewage sludge, fats, oils and greases and any electronic waste. And again, that's by policy, not by permit. Next slide. So special waste they're allowed by permit in the state would be asbestos. And I I put and canic, even though that's not a special waste, but I'll explain that further later. Contaminated soils, we're able to take that have maybe resins, chemicals, petroleum, diesels or oils. Baghouse dust, inorganic filter cakes, treated holes and lumber, treated medical waste. Construction and demolition waste. And again, that's uh what's allowed to be accepted across the state. Next slide. Specifically for Molokai and for special ways that we do have handling. Uh, policies on includes asbestos. Even forward the next three or four slides, it just adds to this list. Contaminated soil, semi-solid waste, treated medical waste. Go ahead. And construction and demolition waste. Construction and demolition wastes are accepted only after the hauler uh fills out a declaration of non-hazardous. Uh, construction and demolition waste form. And this form goes through describing where the material comes from. But specifically what kind of materials are in the waste. Uh, there's quite a list there. You've got. Canic, transite, concrete asphalt, asbestos. And this form is vetted from some of our consultants that we hire and this this this. Essentially, what this does is it. It certifies that the waste that's being brought is is safe to handle for our staff and for any person that happens to come to the landfill. Next slide, please. And again, for contaminated soils, there's a soil profile file sheet that we uh make sure that folks uh fill out before they bring. And again, just to identify any of the contaminants that are in it and establish that it is in fact. A special waste rather than a hazardous waste and as long as the uh. Test results come out so that it can be handled by landfill, then it's accepted. Next slide, please. And I mentioned I'd explain more about uh canic. Uh, canic is an issue because of arsenic. And it's not actually uh called a special waste because the the state has actually exempted. Uh, canic material so that it can be accepted at landfills. Um, by policy, uh, the county has decided to accept. Canic as a special waste and it requires the same handling as arsenic. And or excuse me, as um. Yeah, I'm drawing a blank. In any case, the special handling for it, it would need to be double bagged and it has to be accepted by appointment. And what we do at the landfill is we we actually dig out a hole. Ahead of receiving the waste and it's it's carefully hand unloaded into the hole. And then and then covered uh kind of carefully so that the bags uh don't pop open. And and so that would create any airborne. Uh. Uh, canic or the arsenic into the air that would uh cause an issue for employees. Next slide, please. And that ends the presentation. There's uh more information can be found on the county websites. For construction and demolition waste acceptance. And any other questions you might have, I would be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioners, let me open up for public testimony first and then we can have a discussion and questions for our presenter. Uh, at this time, if there's anybody who would like to testify from our community on this agenda item. Uh, you can signify by raising your hand or notifying our staff in the chat and they will call you accordingly. So again, we are open for testimony on the presentation from the Department of Environmental Management. Anyone wishing to testify, please raise your hand or type. Your name in the chat um to be recognized.
Hi Chair, this is Shentel. I see no one online wishing to testify.
Hello Chair, this is Sabal Lopez and Maui testifier. And there's no one here wishing to testify. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Commission. Uh, we requested for the Department of Environmental Management to join us. So I'll open it the floor up to Commissioners who have questions. Would anybody like to start? Okay, I guess it would be me. All right, um, thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for your time. Does Molokai, I I have so many questions um after the presentation. Um, let let me start this way. Why did the County of Maui decide to include um arsenic as a special? Ha- uh handle handle ways or special ways?
It's the the potential for for arsenic to be uh, you know, become airborne as in in the handling. Uh, and. The the other element I I meant, I I forgot to say was uh asbestos was the word that I I couldn't come up with. I mean, the the hazard is is if asbestos becomes airborne. And and for canic or because of the arsenic in it, the same the same thing is is present. And it's just out of an abundance of caution that we uh. That that we accept uh the canic as a special waste. So that we can safely handle it. And and again, having it double bagged, we're able to do that without becoming airborne.
Okay, so um is there a calculated volume limit? To how much of this material goes from special waste to hazardous waste? Or being accepted and not accepted?
No, no, I mean, it would just be an operational issue. I mean. We need to be able to handle it kind of in in one. We would typically do it so that we can, as long as we have operational crews, I think we typically take it early in the morning so it. It's before our day starts, so we can take that operations. You know, in a different area and then get that covered and then get back down for the for the public, you know, to open the landfill. And so it's just an operational issue. I mean, if if there's a lot of volume, we may have to take it in in multiple days, for instance. If we're not able to, you know, come in early enough and get it get it buried before the normal day begins.
So for an island like Molokai, do you have a certified detailed uh process? Or a procedural plan specifically for Molokai? On the amount and personnel and ability to collect these kinds of special waste?
It's really spelled out. I mean, our normal landfill staff could receive it. I mean, we 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 receive asbestos there, you know, all the time. I think uh our special handling tonnage for. The last fiscal year was a hundred tons of special waste, including asbestos.
So. So we've been doing it all the time here. Is there a special person in charge at the Molokai landfill? That inspects to ensure that the people filling out the form and the things that they're saying is accurate of what they're dumping?
Yeah, the forms are filled out, the the CMD form, for instance, is is filled out and we have a uh. Uh, we are hired in it, uh, you know, someone outside to to vet those forms and and make sure that all the the boxes are are checked. And and that it is uh deemed non-hazardous. As far as asbestos. Uh, all all staff are trained uh in in special waste safety and in fact, in special waste um. Recognition in in case somebody brings in a load, just trying to sneak something in, you know, our staff are trained how to how to recognize. So so the answer is, I mean, kind of all staff is is trained in 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 safe handling of the special waste.
Okay, I I get some more questions, but does any other um Commissioner have any questions? Commissioner Kelly, are you trying to? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sorry. You would like dig an area to place these items in. Um, I mean, it's not in the right where the public goes. But I do understand that um where the public, um where we normally dump our trash. It's lined, so when you're putting this special. Um, materials, you're digging it, is it in a lined area?
It is in a lined area. Um, I I know on Molokai, at least at least some couple of years ago, they they put the special waste in an actual separate place. Apart from where the public brings in the trash. Uh, that's not the case here at Central Maui Landfill. Uh, they they take it to the same area, but again, in both places, uh, we take the special waste and and cover it. You know, before before having anyone else come into the landfill. So I mean, it it becomes safe for. Not only our workers, but for anybody that might be nearby where the special waste was received.
Yeah, I understand that part, but where. Bury it? Is.
Commissioner Kelly, you you are going in and.
Is it lined?
Wasn't able to hear the question.
Um. I'm just asking if. The area that you're putting this material in is lined. Before you um you put in the material, the special waste?
Yeah, there's no special liner, I mean, under, I mean, directly under, but the the whole landfill is is has has liner. So so the answer is yes.
That is lined wherever you put.
For Molokai, I mean, the older parts of the landfill have a have a uh a soil liner. But all all of the newer sections have have the uh geomembrane, the eighty mil uh liner. But 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 all parts of the landfill have have a uh. Either either soil or the geomembrane. It's all all permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other Commissioner wishing to ask questions? Okay, I I have a couple more. Um, how long does the double bag over the arsenic or or the um. The hazardous material or last?
Good answer for that. I mean, plastic is is pretty pretty durable and and lasts a long time before it degrades. But it but again, it's it's all encapsulated in 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 soil, you know, as soon as received.
And and then, um. I mean, this is probably not something that you would know right off, but. It it is interesting to me that we don't own the land that the county landfill is on. And yet we collect and are able to store hazardous material or special waste material. And dig the ground and then leave it there. So in the event that the landowner. Didn't extend us the opportunity to stay there, would the county be liable to dig all that stuff up and make the land uh be be. Financially responsible for rehabilitating the land in which we put hazardous material in?
The environmental, I mean, basically whoever places the waste is kind of responsible for it. Forever. I mean, essentially, I mean, regardless of whether we owned it or even if somebody else. I don't know why they would, but if they all, if they bought the landfill. And and e- even then, I mean, they would take on liability, but we would never be removed from the liability. Because we placed it.
Okay.
That makes.
Co- cuz um. M- my concern, I guess I'm thinking is that if if we didn't have, okay, see, the entire. Sho- South Shore, majority of those houses are going to have um lead and arsenic and and those kinds of things. We're seeing that in older buildings that are now being demolished in order to be renovated. If we had a disaster and all that stuff needed to be cleaned out, would we have the capacity at our landfill? To accept that volume? And how would it affect the environment and the land and our ability to um keep our people and our community safe?
I mean, we're we're dealing with that even over here from the Lahaina Fire Department, right? So I mean, if there were a a even a medium-sized disaster and. We wouldn't have the scale probably to to fit it all in in into the the landfill as it is current. It's it's not really realistic to even build landfills to the scale. Of that kind of disaster. I mean, you you have to mitigate it. In ways like we did over here, we had to build a a temporary debris site in order to have time to. You know, build a permanent debris site and and recovery just becomes a process, kind of a phased approach, if you will.
Okay, um. Would the department be able to provide us with the um, sorry, with the. Annual report that you guys do? Yeah. And and then also. Yeah. Just just so that we could be, and and the reason we're asking and we invited you is. Um, we are beginning to see a lot of older um demolitions happening, like I mentioned earlier. And um. Their ability to like get exemptions from us or like move forward on their project. A lot of times the questions are, where are you dumping all of your waste? And of course, we don't. And of course, we don't want them to dig the ground and leave it where it is. But we were pretty interested to find out like, what is the responsible thing for our community to do? And do we have the capacity as a county to collect that? I am also really interested in the department maybe considering a plan of how specifically for Molokai, what the forecast looks like for how much we can accept and what we're going to do after the total filling of that landfill. And, and just, it's, it, it seems to me that we get massive volumes of older homes that need for be demolished. And with the HHL suggesting that they potentially will move, I, I think everybody's concentrating on the move and the retreat, but not enough effort is being done on the demolition and recovery. And so I super interested in being educated and helping to advocate for responsible kinds of policies and help that this commission can give to our community for demolition of those kinds of things. Anybody else? Anybody else have anything? Okay, just one last question. When you guys did the calculation of how long the landfill, how long you would have before the landfill was inoperable or full, did that include the potential of like disaster and having to remove all the houses on the South Shore and collecting debris from those kinds of things? Or is this just based on normal everyday debris consumption?
Right, it's averaging what the average tons have been and just projecting that forward.
And as we, since that calculation was made till now, have we, do we know if the calculation is correct? Or are we seeing an increase of more than we expected and projected?
The relation is based on, you know, the current couple of recent years and so as so is, on that basis, it's correct. But I don't, I don't know what, what your average tons have been over the years or how much it's increased over time. I could probably get that information as well as AO, you know, annual.
No, I just, I think it was around 2019 when we, I heard a presentation by DEM talking about what, how many cells they had left. And then it just seems like over the last four years or so, those cells have quickly filled up and we're now where I didn't think we would be, but I could be wrong too. So I was just asking that question to see if we were moving and filling up faster than was projected. But if those things are always calculated based on recent years, then then I suppose you guys have a good handle on that. Okay, anybody else? Also, one more thing, agency review. The, when we have projects that are doing especially demolition or sending their hazardous waste or special waste to the landfill, does your department have somebody who is dedicated to reviewing or transmitting comments to the commissions?
Not sure where we would be invited to make comments. We get involved when we get the CND applications or the contaminated soil application. So it's not until probably a contractor is hired where we, where that's where our interface begins. Building permits would be more, you know, you know, when you apply for a demolition permit, you know, that the Public Works would be the entity that would be, you know, making comments at that.
Okay.
We're kind of more at the tail end.
Because your review of our projects for demolition, especially for a smaller company like ours is super important for us. So I'm hoping that as we go forward into the future, we can have some really good comments and input from you on, especially on our projects that contain a lot of these kinds of disposals to the landfill. And, and we want to be good partners too and educated. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt for that. Anybody else have any more comments or input? Okay. All right, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for your time. We really appreciate it. Love Director Agawa, so please give him our aloha and thank you for your time. Okay, moving on. Item D, Director's Report. No agenda, looking for agenda items for future meetings and then completed application report generated by the planning department. December 11 is none. So future agenda items? Anna? Deputy Director or Candace or Sibyl?
Hey Candace Tackerson, so we have on our next agenda some training for the commissioners that we need to be going over, especially for the new commissioners. We need to do some HR packets, just your usual things and we'll do a planning overview. And I'm sure we'll be getting together with the Chair to also talk about any trainings that potentially she would like to bring forth as well or any requests from the commissioners. So it's not just a one-sided training. You guys can also request for certain things as well.
Thank you Candace. Any update on Commissioner Place?
I do not have an update. I would probably have to check with Chantel. Yes, Chanta, I saw her just unmute herself.
Hi Chair, this is Chantel. I'm still working with the Board of Ethics to clear Commissioner Heather Place. As soon as that happens, then I will add her to the agenda.
And we should probably doing HR and that training until she's on board or else we'll have to do them. Okay.
That's why I asked, so thank you.
Yes, thank you for that reminder.
Okay.
And Chair will probably have an SMA exemption as well for construction of our senior family dwelling and garage camp subdivision. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other commissioners, anything that you had questions for the department on future applications or? Okay, seeing none, our next scheduled meeting will be January 8, 2024. So we're not going to see you guys anymore until 2025. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, mahalo to our commissioners, our community and our staff. In holiday season, I just want to say how much we all appreciate you, how much I appreciate you and our community for just being awesome Kiai of our Aina and our people. And mahalo you and wish you the best of a Happy New Year. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Mahalo. Mahalo. Thank you.